Steve will be on WebEx and on YouTube. People can tune in all over.
We are live.
So. Wait a minute, show you.
Was there something different?
They were just like. Just zero line should not.
Shouldn't be in there.
I was insane.
Yes.
Hey.
This would. Yeah. So it's unnecessary.
Three minutes.
No. Three plus that we have is other than what's required for. You know what I mean, for like the time.
Well, last month.
I know that's got to, that's got to stay.
Last month.
What's that number?
And then now that we got them by ordinance, it's about one point.
So that's what I got. There was some requirement.
I had to ring up like short underwear.
Yeah, I know.
There's a million days in Pennsylvania and then last week we had another one. That was just.
So that's about what she was saying.
I guess. We have more than made. One point eight.
That's what, that's what's so.
Plus one point eight.
Okay.
As the last three points.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna start to. Yes. Before we start the meeting, I'll go ahead and make an announcement. One week from today is our regular council meeting. At four o'clock. On the fifteenth, one week from today, we're going to have a law enforcement appreciation day. Get together in the pavilion. Tony has been working with me and with Terry Rancorn, who's a retired FBI agent. And the goal is to recognize and appreciate our prospect police officers, but also other law enforcement personnel who live in Prospect. So we've got several. Act, at least one active FBI agent, one DEA Assistant Special Agent in Charge, a couple of retired FBI agents, and anybody else in law enforcement council. It'd be wonderful if the council can come. It'll be relatively informal and I'm guessing half an hour ish. So it'll be a lot of, a lot of just people visiting with one another. So if you can make it.
So will Johnson have a notice on?
Yeah, yeah, we'll send out a e-blast to everybody. Good.
Okay. This is for active or retired or both?
All of the, yeah. And it's not just prospects, it's, it's law enforcement who live in Prospect. Okay, it's four o'clock. A call to order the special meeting of the City of Prospect City Council. May eighth, twenty twenty-three, it's four P M. I've made the announcement I wanted to make about law enforcement appreciation day. The, the new business is a discussion of the draft. Budget using the workbook, but also the ordinance. And also talk about the ad verum tax rate for the city for the upcoming fiscal year. I thought what I would do is use the workbook and go through a few items that I'll comment on and then open up the floor to questions and discussion. Frank raised some good points in his email earlier. David said he's got some points to go over. So. The, the first place I'll start is on page two. The revenue line, the top line is the property tax. And that number is flat. Year over year and has been for a number of years. And so even though our appraisals all went up by state law, the revenues don't go up. So unless we raise the rate. And this budget does not propose an increase in the ad verum tax rate. Which is, which is.
That could reduce.
But it reduces slightly. Which is remarkable. Since Greenscape's went up eighteen percent. Rumkey has told us to expect a twenty-five to thirty percent increase. And I've addressed that in response to Frank's email earlier about how we're gonna hopefully solve that problem. Salaries went up seven percent last year and this budget proposes that they go up another three percent this year, but there are a couple of things that we've done that, that we should, we may be able to get by this year without increasing the tax rate. The, I, I think with with the increases in the future, in sal, future salary increases, other expenses going up. It's, it's realistic to start thinking now about a tax increase for next year. And what form that would take is something we can discuss. But it could be your increase in the real estate rate, the ad verum tax rate. Could be an increase in the insurance premium tax or some other form of tax. But I think that with all the inflation and all the other pressures that to keep our city moving forward, that's something we're gonna have to think about, consider, but I think we'll get by for another year.
Doug, excuse me.
Sure.
Do you, on the insurance rate, do, do we know what Metro's budget is looking at? Are they, are they gonna be rated their rate?
I don't know. I know there, I believe that their rate is five percent. Ours, I believe, is seven percent.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we're, we're allowed to go up as high as ten percent. So that.
We're triggered. We're triggered to go up if they go beyond what we are.
Oh, is that right? Which they, which they haven't. They're still below us.
I know. I just went, was curious if they, you know.
I don't know. I doubt, I guess that they have not increased it because they seem to be.
I have been following what, what the new regime down there is doing.
Yeah, I haven't followed that closely.
I'm just curious.
Question. So I. That's just, just running through these on page two, which is administration and general government. As I, as I mentioned, that this line five, one, 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 fifty-one, eleven, contemplates a three percent increase in our, in our salaries. Health insurance is essentially flat, which is good news. The next note I had was over on page six. The legal services line items. The LDG litigation, five twenty-three, have taken some pretty aggressive steps, I would say. Kind of hold those expenses down. Our attorneys, outside attorneys have agreed to relatively significant reduction in their hourly rate. And I'm trying to keep on them to, to not go beyond what we asked them to do, which they've, they've done twice earlier in the year and I told them they couldn't, they had to wait and get direction from us before they launched into projects. So I'm trying to be pretty mindful of those expenses while still getting the best representation we can get. The next item I was gonna comment on is over on page ten. In the police. Land, capital outlay, land item sixty-six, eleven. So that this land item includes eleven thousand fifty dollars for four block cameras. The flock cameras are in place now in the estates of Hunting Creek in Ennis Brook. And there's another camera system. I don't think it's flock that's in place in Sutherland. So this. This would provide, and these are the, these are the cameras that read license numbers and that are tied. I don't understand how it all works, but if there's a reported license plate that's been stolen or a car that's been stolen, that there'll be some sort of ping or alert that'll come through to the police. Yeah, that's, so it's not just random numbers that we see. We get alerted if there's some.
And they're not like.
Right.
That's always a question.
Right. But it, but all that we're hearing and learning about them, they've been a helpful tool in Shepherdsville. St. Matthews has now got one. Middletown's got, got them and have been pretty pleased with them. So I'm. We've, anyway, we've got, we've got a lot of item in here for us to have the opportunity to, to get those put in. Their, there's their backlog. There's a lot of demand. But, but it's, it's something that I think it's already, it's already proven helpful.
And we made a felony arrest over in St. Hunting Creek with it, the stolen vehicle we had that last meeting. It's given us the ability to track where it lands, which is a great tool. And it gives us a little bit of investigative, uh, place of if the keys were in it because they're, you know, like I said, I don't want to put much detail, but the keys are in the receipt over. It's amazing the areas that, by the time we recovered it, it had been out in Shepherdsville, but we knew it was out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
The good investigative tool, it's good to help. It's good for us, yes.
Yeah.
We can get more things recovered. Is this just, Doug, is this just capital cost?
Yes, well, that's a, that's a good, that's a very good question. And maybe it's in the wrong line item here. It's a capital, it is, it's about twenty-five hundred dollar a year. Fee. So if, if we lease, essentially we lease them. And lease the service. That's, so it may not be in exactly the right spot.
Okay, but I mean, is it enough numbers? Is it high enough number to?
Yes.
The annual maintenance?
Yes. Yes.
The bus capital.
Yeah, yes. And it's, that's, this, this will be, if it's something we do, as long as we want the cameras, we will be paying that every year. Okay, that, that's the charge.
So we're leasing the cameras really?
Yeah, that's right.
Is that not true?
It's a recurring expense every year.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So and we'll, we'll get a pretty good handle early on as it, is it worth it? But I, I feel like we're gonna think it's worth it.
Because of time that's in investigation for that jurisdiction.
I, I can assure you that it'll be worth it. Was installed in Cincinnati when I was there and solved some major crimes. We had with reoccurring burglaries in particular areas. And it gave them a list of the cars that were coming in at the times that the burglaries were occurring. Allowed them to solve it. Lexington has gone to putting them in. And in their new budget, they're doubling the number that they're, that they're putting in because they've been so effective.
Yeah.
So. Excuse me, but is this a, is the twenty-five thousand a recurring number?
It's a lease number, so it wouldn't be recurring.
Yeah, no, it's eleven thousand. It's eleven thousand fifty for the four block cameras. It's there in the notes section. Yeah, the balance there.
Thirty fours for other equipment.
Okay, but again, is that a recurring?
Yes.
What's the recurring number?
Eleven thousand.
Four.
Fifty dollars.
Okay.
That'll, that'll be something, as long as we keep the cameras, it will be paid.
Do they, do they upgrade them for that? Are you saying they upgrade them yearly?
Oh, well.
Or, I'm sure they do because they're, they're gonna work diligently to keep all the businesses that they get.
Okay.
They, there's no one I've seen surpasses their quality.
Yeah.
Not questioning that. I'm just looking at, look at, you know, how much we're spending that.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I, I really do. Thanks.
I feel pretty good about that. This budget, in the public works section, page eleven, there's, this budget does not contemplate any paving for this year.
Doug, down on seventy-three thirteen C, City Hall Projects, thirty thousand dollars. Has that? I, I, I think you're at a date. We've had, we've figured what, like twenty-eight thousand dollar City Hall project. Is that those projects been identified?
No. And it, what's happened is we have, we've seen things. We've tried not to take on anything too big, but there are things that need work. Our, our air conditioning system's not doing the proper job of dehumidifying the building, which is why you see dehumidifiers around. So we're probably gonna try to get that addressed. But there, there are just some things that come up. That that this, that that's what this line item is intended to deal with.
You're gonna spend it in, next year, you probably ought to be identifying what you're gonna be spending on pretty soon.
Well, some, some of it is, we don't, we don't know. Some of it is gonna be a, you know, a leak in the pupula or, or whatever it is, but it's, it's, it's maintaining, you know, this isn't our house, but this is our building and there's, there's a lot of maintenance that goes into it.
So it does, one of the projects potentially is the roof and the, the leaks that we.
Well, that was repaired. That has been repaired. I just brought that up as an example.
Okay.
And I'm just saying there, I don't know what the next issue like that will be, but this is contemplating something's gonna come up just like it does at our home.
So that's, that's been chronic. So it's.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's all the notes that I had to go over, but oh no, I do have one further one. It's, it's significant. That is, we were budgeting in here in the parks budget. Where's that, John?
Page thirteen?
Saturday.
Thirteen.
Page four.
Our bridge.
Page fourteen, so.
Well, fourteen, oh God, it's a horse career.
Yeah, okay. Line item eighty-six thirteen, which is structures in the parks.
Next page.
Yeah, page thirteen. Line items eighty-six thirteen, there's budgeted thirty-seven thousand eighty dollars. And thi, this is a this is to cover the cost, to begin to cover the cost of the new bridge that we talked about putting down in Heritage Park. We got back the bids that were higher than everybody expected last year and we didn't do it. We, we've got bids. We're working with the bidders right now on that. And what, what we're proposing is for this expense to be paid. We'll pay, pay for the bridge when it's put in, but we'll borrow the funds from our reserves and pay them back over five years. So it's a way to recognize that we're having a capital asset that'll last us a hundred years. But, but it distorts the budget to take it out of operations all in one year. So if we spread it out over five years, I think that, that'll address the fact that it's a long-term investment. And it's set up as a loan at three percent, but we're just paying ourselves. We're borrowing the money from ourselves and paying ourselves back. And so that line item would be in the budget each year for the next five years.
Doug, I've lost track. How did we come up with the cost of a hundred and eighty thousand?
That was the low bid last year. So.
But we've been working with these bidders.
We are. And we'll know Friday afternoon. That's right. And that, that's a very good point. This, this number will change based on what we, what we do. The Rumkey number will change. We don't have the bid yet from Rumkey. So we've just taken our best shot at that based on what they told us.
And what have they told us?
They told us to expect to go up twenty-five to thirty percent and then.
Focusing on Frank's question about, about that, which is a really, really good point, needs some collaboration. In the discussions with Rumkey, when you find out that looks hopeful, what do you wanna tell us about?
Yes, they, they, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize I hadn't communicated this to everybody. They have recommended to us that we consider going to recycling at curbside using rolling carts. And, and that, that would be the savings. Of both. Bi-weekly instead of weekly. And the carts are large enough that they should handle everybody's recycling for two weeks. That will save us well over three hundred thousand dollars. So it's a, it's a you know, that's part of, that's part of how we can do this budget without increasing our tax rate. Notwithstanding all the other increases. So that's why that Rumkey number, Frank, in response to your email question, that's why the number is lower. Even though other aspects of Rumkey's bid are gonna go up, but other waste companies will be bidding as well. So we'll, we'll find out what they all come in. How they all come in. I will say, I've been very impressed dealing with the business people at Rumkey. They're very good, seem like very good people. They seem like they're trying to help us and I was, they're, they're the ones who proposed going to curbside recycling as a way to save money.
They, in my experience with, and I dealt with them when, when John and I were putting these things together. They were very, very quiet and they forthcoming with the options. One of the things that concerns me, and two things that concern me about that. Number one is the, the demographic of our city. That I don't think that's gonna be a popular brand, you know. The second thing is, I don't think there's anything that it just seems hypocritical that we would cut back recycling. With all the money we spend on parks and trees and everything else, we promote ourselves as, as environmentally positive.
Right.
We should be. But I think what's gonna happen, I can tell you in my case, what's gonna happen, it's gonna go in the garbage.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna haul it up my hill.
Well, yeah, I understand. You won't be carrying it. It's, it's a cart.
I understand.
But, but we recognize that that's gonna be a decision some people make.
And that's an economic decision for, for Rum.
That's right.
Because recycling is a cost to them.
Yeah.
They, they don't make any money off recycling like they did seven, eight years ago.
That's right. Yeah.
So, less volume. They have recycling and, but, but that's counter to what.
Yeah, it's an interesting discussion and Don Gibson and I have had this discussion as to whether recycling is real. And the, the advantage, apparently, one of the advantages of recycling is it reduces what goes into landfills. So that's a, that's a positive, but it's not the panacea that it was promoted to be twenty years ago. You know, it's not quite as green as everybody thought it was gonna be or hoped that it would be.
That's because the market for
That's right.
Different items of recycling goes up and down.
That's right.
There are items in recycling that do make money. Cardboard is one of them. Timber is another one. The problem with it really is glass.
Glass is a problem.
Glass is a piece of tile.
I mean, if you could segregate, and as many communities do, my daughter lives in Oregon. And she has three or four.
Bins.
Bins.
Yeah.
Including one on her, on her kitchen counter where she puts organic, you know, banana peels, coffee grounds, onions, skins, you know, that type of thing goes into.
A separate container.
But that's, that's not a Caesar. But anyway, I think, you know, I don't know if you've asked, okay, if we could, if we could define, redefine.
What's recycling?
What gets recycled. The plastics are a big problem. Yes, or so.
Yeah, that's a discussion I've not had, but it's, it's something I will have as a very good suggestion.
If you could limit that, people, people would say there would, if you said, okay, we take paper and aluminum cans as part of recycling. And, and, you know, the economics of that would shift dramatically, I think, if you excluded the others.
So, so Mayor, but Frank's on to something in terms of being able to potentially lower what the bid could be based on saying, we're no longer doing recycle plastic, you could put that in your garbage. If they don't do it, but I think you'd have to have a discussion when the bids come out about going back to the people and saying, what would you charge us if we did?
Right.
This, because we don't have that in the bid right there.
And, and as, as John Evans educated me, and I, I wasn't, have to say, I wasn't aware of this. We can renegotiate our contracts at just about any time as we go along. It's not, we're not stuck with the, the original bid.
So you'll get that bid back Friday?
Not that soon. When do we get it? We haven't even put it out for bid yet.
No, the one that comes back Friday is the bridge.
Oh, okay.
So advertise, plan to advertise for the sanitation bid next Monday. With the being returned no later than June twelve, which is on.
So by the time we do the second reading, these numbers that are sort of in flux right now will be a lot, a lot, a lot better numbers.
So, but we'll have the bridge, we'll have the bridge estimates that by next Monday, so what I heard.
Yes, we'll, we'll actually receive the bids Friday afternoon.
Okay.
And, and I'll probably look at the numbers, but we'll leave Steve to help us walk through them.
Okay.
And we'll probably be in the meeting early next week to to talk about that. Or maybe. Yes, hi, Don.
I, I just, I, I agree with multiple sides here. To me, it's a no-brainer from the city's perspective to go with Rumkey's proposal about at the curb, et cetera, every, every other week. But I know we have, we have people, we have residents, that's gonna be a hardship for. I mean, it's easy for me, because I, it's easy for me. I have a flat yard and I take it out there anyway for various reasons. But that's gonna be hard for some people. So I, I wanna say at this point, it's pre, premature till we have more bids and so forth. But I think we need to look at this. We need to really focus on this and, and look at it very carefully.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're, what we're gonna find is some people will be fine with it. Actually, that we previously lived in Glendale Hills and they had exactly the same, they had Rumkey, they had all the same services that Rumkey provides out here. The last year or two, we were in Glendale Hills, they went to every other week recycling with the rolling carts because the cost savings is so significant. And some people will, will put the recycling in the trash. Some people don't recycle now. And it's, some people, a neighbor will help them do it and it's just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be different. There's no question about that. But, but unlike picking up our garbage, we can get by if not everybody recycles as a city, we can get by. So I encourage people to do it, but it's not gonna be the end of the world. Five percent of our households opt out. And hopefully neighbors will help step in and, and, and help people who need a little help. Okay, so those are the points I wanted to go over. David, I think you indicated, you had Frank?
Well, the other thing on item eighty-six thirteen, structures, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right.
Which portion of that is the, the boardwalk?
Zero.
Okay.
And, and a hundred and eighty is a, is a made up number. That was the low bid last year and so we're hoping, you know, we'll make a judgment when we get the bids.
But that work is right now within that.
We're, we, we expect it to be. The bidders who will be, we're bidding now are the same people who bid previously. So they're, they're coming, it's, I think it's called a negotiated bid process. And you go to the people who submitted bids and, and then essentially rebid it and allow some changes in the specifications. We didn't open it up to all companies, just the people who bid previously. So they know what the number was. They know what the low bid was. They know we didn't like it. So presumably they're gonna come in with a number that's lower. Hopefully, we'll find out at the end of the day on Friday. Frank, any other points that you wanted to touch on?
Not on this, not on your comments.
Okay. David, did you say that you had some?
Yeah, let me, before we leave that one, I'd like to ask, was Bornstein one of the bidders?
Yes.
Their owner, what's his name?
Rob.
Rob Peeling. Peeling, yeah. He made the point, Linda knows where I'm going with this. That the way it had gone out initially was for the bridge to be this long. Fifty feet, whatever it was. And the reason for the high cost of the bids was because of where it got anchored on, on, on banks.
That's right.
Point he made was if you moved it back.
Take it longer.
And you had a little bit longer bridge, but you didn't have it so close to the edge that the class would come down and, and I guess we'll find out.
Yeah, and you wouldn't have the concrete apartments.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of it.
Yeah.
And that's where we saved a lot of money on the parking lot, when you read the parking lot here.
Yeah, we, it kinda cut it in half.
Yeah.
More than half.
Yeah. So he's, he's, he's good about coming up with ideas.
It was his idea on the park.
Right. Well, you, you know, you respect that with people who try to help you save money.
He did.
But David, you had some. But David, you had some.
So, yeah, so the, the first question I have, and it may be that I don't understand. The, how the ad valorem tax rate is set. Um, our ad valorem tax rate before was point one seven three. Last year.
Right, correct.
Okay, we're suggesting that we're going to do it at. One seventeen point ten cents.
Right.
So. Are we required to set it at seventeen point ten?
Um, if you're adopting what is computed as a compensating rate, yes. Um, the compensation rate is basically a calculation that lets you. Essentially the same revenues as the prior years with the exception of new prior construction.
Ah, okay, that explains the math difference that I couldn't understand in there.
Okay, it doesn't have to be exactly.
Yeah, but, yeah, but.
But it can't be the four percent.
Well.
Without going through.
Well, who was that?
Yeah, well, I, I know that. The, the question would be is that right now, we're showing that we're. Going to borrow to balance the budget forty-seven thousand dollars out of reserve.
We're not gonna borrow forty-seven thousand.
We're gonna take.
We're gonna take.
We'll take forty-seven thousand out.
That's right.
So the question is, is.
But, but that's only if we, if we spend the, spend the money.
Yep, so the question is, is. Why would we reduce our tax rate, ad valorem tax rate, less than what it was last year? Where we're then borrowing money because we're reduced, not borrowing, but taking. Um, from there to do that. So I'm not, I haven't done the math. I don't know if, if we stayed at the.
You can't.
One seven three.
Can't necessarily just stay at your current rate. It has to adjust. Based on, by the state law form.
Tell me what you mean by adjust.
You have to adjust to the compensating rate, which is defined.
No, I understand that, but as, as Frank said, you're allowed to do a four percent in- increase. All I'm saying is, is.
Not, not a four percent increase.
Less than four percent.
Not a four percent increase in the rate. It's a four percent increase in the gross.
In the gross amount, okay.
And what does that equate to?
Well, it's, it's on that worksheet.
That's about sixty thousand.
About seventy thousand, wasn't it?
It said change in revenue eighty-two thousand dollars, eight, eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
Is, is what it looked like.
Well, there's change in revenue year over year, but if you compare. You're gonna get eighteen, we're netting eighteen off the compensating too, so back out the eighteen.
I see what you're saying. So that would be.
Sixty.
Fifty-nine or fifty-eight or whatever, you know. But anyhow, I just think. Rather than taking from surplus. The, the, the citizens aren't going to say, you've raised my taxes because it's the same compensating rate. Their bill would be the, their property bill would be the same as what it would be last year. Um, so instead of taking from revenue, our reserve to do this, if we stayed at the same rate. I, I'm just throwing it out.
Right.
I'm not opposed to doing what we're doing because we have an incredible um, reserve.
Yeah.
We, we've got a larger reserve than, than most cities that I'm aware of.
And what, what line item is the amount of forty-two thousand?
Well, I was going.
Oh, here it is.
I was going off of this sheet.
Um, yeah, it's, it's below miscellaneous revenue in forty-four oh seven.
Yeah.
So, but if you look at, at the current budget, uh, we were, we were quote, taking a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and six thousand dollars. From reserves. We didn't, we, we haven't taken that. We don't anticipate taking that.
And we may not based on, just to loan the bridge um, with revenue.
Right.
But anyhow, okay, so that, that was just one concern that I had when I was going over it and. I understand a little bit more about the ad valorem tax rate. I don't think this is critical, something to think about.
Seven.
Anyway, um, let me go through the other thing.
I, I don't think that one, I don't think that's gonna reduce anybody's tax bill because of the, because of the.
That's right.
EVA.
Right.
Information. I think people still gonna get increases in the taxes.
Think so.
No, that's, you're looking at a level of tax bill right there.
Uh, uh, I think the revenues are flat. People are not gonna be paying.
I mean, that's what it shows on the page too.
Be the case.
Doc, you compensate, you'll actually get a reduction.
But, but the one seven one uh, tax rate gives, gives us uh, essentially uh, flat from last year.
Yeah, it, it should be the same as what we did last year, right?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna comment on, it says that about our reserves. Uh, the last I saw our reserves were three point six million.
Yeah, but we got a whole.
Let me finish, let me finish. And, and in April, we spent three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Our revenue was ninety. So that's gonna take our reserves down about another almost three hundred thousand. And, and if we, if we make our budget this year, we're gonna take the reserves down another six hundred fifty thousand. So we're gonna be looking at about two point six, two point seven million in reserves. We have to keep one point eight. So we're down to about a million or less in terms of reserves that are spent on.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be more than that. We, we have a run rate of a three hundred fifty thousand a month. So, you know, we're close to a million dollars in the next three months. Take that off, take that. I mean, that's consistent with what you're saying.
Right.
But it's not at the end of the year when we start here, we're not gonna have a million eight surplus. We're gonna have a million eight over here for the uh, reserve.
Which we need to.
And la- last.
May have eight.
June, at the end of, end of the fiscal year is a good time to look at your reserves. Because that's at the bottom of the spending.
Oh, yeah.
Because you get your, you, you get your revenue, a lot of revenue in with, with the uh, uh, taxes, property taxes. And then it falls down the rest of it. End of June last year, we had three point seven billion in reserves. Now, part of that was, uh, was the art funds. But to uh, June two thousand uh, twenty-two, it was three point two million. And so our reserves are, are in fact dwindling and they're dwindling at a point in time when our fixed costs are going up. But essentially, our, our, our revenues are flat.
Flat, yeah.
And even if we raise taxes, there's not that, there's not that much. And I, I'm just suggesting that, that we need to, rather than take money from reserves. We're gonna have to start controlling costs a little better. And rather than take money from reserves, we're gonna be looking at putting some money into reserves. And you, you step back, the last couple of years, we spent one point two million in uh, one point two million uh, art funds. About a million of that's on the park. We spent about two hundred thousand dollars in, in places, been well, a good investment. We spent fifty thousand dollars on US forty-two, another good investment. We, uh, what, what else have we done? We spent, uh, we gave uh, seven percent, uh, seven percent increase. Which, which, which was what? We gave that in, in February. I, I think we've made good investments, but the question I would ask is at time, rather than launching to another investment, the, the, the. Air Street Bridge, a hundred and eighty thousand. I was at, I was at a uh, a Tipton meeting. And they were talking about, they've got a concern about construction prices. They're having some of the, some of the projects that are funded. Construction prices are going up and they can't even get fixed. I don't know that this is a good time to be launching into a, another project. We, we've done a lot. Is, is this a time next year to kind of hold back our spending a little bit and digest what we've done? And not take anything out of, take a penny out of reserves, find a way to leave the reserves as they are and, and loom.
I'd go with that. I think that's an excellent point.
Well, we don't know what the, uh, we don't know what the bids are going to be. Um, I, I will say this. I, I ran very hard on supporting our police, which we're doing, and law enforcement, public safety. I ran very hard on the parks and I got a very good response from the people I spoke with about that. I don't, I make no apologies for the investments. I don't view this, you know. It's, there are different ways of saying things. You spend the money on US forty-two, it's a good investment. You spend the money on the police, it's a good investment. You spend the money on the parks, it's a good investment. And this has been an incredibly good investment behind the council room. The number of people out here every single day.
God love it.
It's just incredible. So I, I make no apologies for continuing to invest in our parks. Our citizens love it. They believe in our parks. And uh, and I'm, you know, this, this is the budget. It's, it's balanced. We'll come out okay at the end of the year, but that's my proposal. The council will make the decision, but that's, that's what I believe in.
So I, I only have one other question that I have and it's on page sixteen and it's, it's a math question. Um, if, and you need to look at this too, if, if you do. You've got down the, the salary of the council is seventy-two hundred dollars and that's, I don't know where that figure came from. Um, it's eighteen thousand dollars.
And that's, you're right. I'm gonna carry over from this here.
Does that translate into?
With that, I have to exact chart forward to the front page.
Yeah, it is, it's.
So that's, that's something that, that's gotta be, gotta be correct.
That's great, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. That's all that I have.
On, on page sixteen, while you're there. I have the three and, and I come up with a million forty-nine in current, went to a million eighty-eight. Unless my math's wrong, there, the difference is thirty-eight now to, which isn't three percent, it's three point seven percent.
This is on page sixteen?
Yeah. Unless my math is wrong. Which is possible. Three percent would be thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty and three, and this is thirty-eight thousand nine. It's another seventy-six hundred dollars more. Uh, I don't know how that.
Well, we got. Maybe we've put our heads together after the, after the meeting.
I have several comments. Yeah, David's finished that. And in my memo you, I, I mentioned, I thought that the contingency needed to be looked at. Mayor's discretionary.
What page is that on?
It's on five.
What was that adjective you threw in there? Uh, I, I loved it, but I can't remember it. In describing the amount of the increase, what was the adjective? Percolator or something.
That fits, but I think that was.
What was the word you used?
I don't know.
I, I have one thing to say about it in response to your comment, and that is that for my nine plus years. That line was five thousand dollars.
Right, and I was.
This is twenty thousand dollars and.
But John just spent nine hundred dollars in.
My comment is simply this, that I don't believe in all those years that I ever used all of that five thousand. There were some years when I didn't use a thousand.
Yeah, uh, if you recall.
I, I don't, you can put in twenty thousand or a hundred thousand, but it isn't gonna get used.
But that's my hope, we don't use it.
Well, I'm not a Frank, I'm not a favorite blank chats at all. Because the, the way the system is set up, if you need more, you come back to the council and you ask for more. And I don't think the council would be uh, stingy when it comes to that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, Frank. My, my view is simply in the day-to-day operations, I don't, I don't contemplate. I don't, I can't tell you where the issue would ever come up, but it would be reassuring in my position to have the flexibility. To, to deal with an emergency or something that came up. And that's the reason for those, for those numbers. Um, and I, I'm expecting and hoping that my experience is the same as Mayor Evans was.
Yeah, it, it, the numbers actually are right in here on fifty-six eleven. Uh, the actual twenty-one slash twenty-two was one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Right.
And you can go back and other previous years, nineteen slash twenty, the amount was nine hundred and one dollars.
Right.
So uh, twenty thousand is. Way more than you're ever gonna need.
Yeah, well, as I said, I was, I was one of the proponents of increasing it to five thousand dollars to giving.
Flexibility.
Giving flexibility to the mayor.
Yeah.
And I believe in that. I believe in bright, like checks though.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree, don't disagree with that in principle. What, what I will say is, if I'm dipping in, quote, dipping in to any. Significant extent to discretionary fund or contingency, contingency fund, it's gonna be done in close communication with the council. I'm not gonna uh, run off and spend the money.
Well, I know, but you know, part of what, part of what that was initially and, and should be is that uh, in the event there was a. Uh, a budget overrun in some category that.
Right.
You wouldn't have to come. Right, so for nickel dime stuff. I mean, that's the, that was.
Correct.
Still is.
Well, and right now, we're dealing with the sinkhole at, at the entrance to Southern. It's, you know, we didn't budget a sinkhole appearing in the pavement and having to, to deal with it. So that's, that's where this kind of. Uh, line item could be helpful.
Well, I'm, I don't, we're not in any disagreement.
Right.
On the principle.
No, I understand.
Okay, I, I just think it's the.
It's, it's a big number.
It's a big number and in a tight budget, I think it should be smaller.
Yeah, well, remember, it, it, it's a big number, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be spent.
All of these numbers may not be spent.
That's right.
None, all.
Well, all the salaries, I anticipate almost all the salaries will be spent.
Yes.
The Rumfield be spent and the LG and E and a lot of them will be spent.
That's correct.
What, David, what was your experience in Lexington and Cincinnati with the mayor having that kind of flexibility? Is this? How, how does this number strike you?
Yeah. Um, I actually mentioned that to you one time that I thought that five thousand was too little for emergencies. And a part of it was because we were talking about. So many new council members we had getting ready to go to the Kentucky legal cities.
Right.
Things and whether we had the funds to do it. And we weren't sure that we did. Now ultimately, we, we did. Um, have the funds, but that was one, one of the things. And you look back and think about, um. The Fourth of July, knowing how expensive that got, even though we've got a budget for that. There was the potential of us going over it rather than, and we only meet once a month to be able to do. An amendment that we would do and when we have to have two readings on it, then you got two months to do something.
You could do that the same day.
No, you can't do it on the, the same day. You gotta have. An emergency, an emergency. Then you gotta see whether that was an emergency or not. Going to a seminar is not an emergency and maybe the Fourth of July picnic is an, an emergency.
I think these are all really good comments. This, this is, this is my proposal.
I've still got one.
Okay, let me, let me just finish this up. So that all of this is subject to the council's making its decision. I don't adopt the budget, I propose the budget. This is my proposal.
Okay, my uh, trigger off, I note to you about, I think uh, strongly that there should be a line item in here for. Uh, council expenses specifically, you know, David. Uh, knowingly or unknowingly, just made, just made, just made the point. That's where uh, things like this, and I brought my show and tell, like this one.
Yeah.
Those type of things are tools of the trade.
Right.
For the council.
Right.
The council needs to be able to, to spend that money without having to go to the mayor and say, Ken.
And as a new council member, two years ago during COVID, the uh, academy was online. And John paid for me to attend online from his contingency fund. So I, but if you need, if you need something, if you need a book, we'll get you a book.
No, that's.
He, he didn't pay for mine. I paid mine.
Yeah, but the point, the point is.
Well, there you go. You should have asked.
And then how do we?
The point is.
How, how do we control our own?
Well, we may, you do a, a motion or a resolution that fair enough, that we pay from this budget.
Okay.
But the, the, the point is that we should not.
Write your check.
As the council, have to go to the mayor to spend money. I mean, we've got committees and everybody's got big budgets or big expenditures. The council needs to be separate. There are situations where you. Where the mayor and the council are going to have differences and the mayor should not be able to shut that down. You have veto power over. Things where you don't particularly agree with the council.
Yeah.
But so I, I think very strongly, it's a, it's a um, it's a separ- But so I, I think very strongly, it's a, it's a, um, it's a separation of, of duties.
You'll, you'll find I'm, I'm going to be very easy to work with. You all need money and we've got it budgeted. And, and then we'll have these, maybe we'll have these contingency funds and emergency funds. There'll be, there'll be room to be supportive of the council.
Okay, if, if it's not in this proposed budget that comes before the council, I'm going to propose that we put in by the council.
Okay.
Because I feel that's strong about your separation of powers.
Understand. Okay, Frank, other, any other points?
No, that's.
Don, any other points?
Yeah, I'd just like to see us find ways to take, not take anything out of reserves next year.
My, my goal will be not to take anything out of reserves.
Well, not put it in the budget. Else you're taking money, that forty two thousand dollars. I, I propose finding ways to reduce some costs and not have to put in the budget.
Okay, John Evans.
Well, I'm just thinking of that way to accomplish what, what Donna's saying. Some of the facts we don't have yet. We don't know what the
Bridge.
Harris Creek Bridge amount is going to be. We don't know exactly what the Rumpkey bill is going to be.
That's right.
Uh, so there are two potential buckets of savings. We don't know what they would be. Uh, I personally would not put the mayor's discretionary fund at twenty thousand, given the history of that. If you reduce that somewhat, you can save that money or you could use some of it to, uh, create a line item for what Frank proposes with the um, council expenditures. Is it my thoughts about this? Other than that, I'm perfectly happy with it.
Well, those are all good comments and it's a work in progress. So we'll be uh, fine tuning and then one week from today, a week from this evening. Uh, I'll present the budget and the budget message, but it'll be roughly in this form. It'll be tweaked some. Um, but these are good comments. This is helpful, helpful discussion, helpful to me.
Just to put a number on this thing. The mayor's discretionary fund and the emergency contingency fund for years. Or how many, but several have been five thousand and ten thousand, total fifteen thousand. And what's proposed here is twenty and twenty, which is forty thousand. And that's a difference of what, twenty five thousand dollars. So there's possible place you can sharpen the pencil and save some thousands of dollars if you choose to do it that way.
Well, if the council, if the council chooses to do it that way.
Well, and his proposal. I'm suggesting you might want to go back and sharpen.
Yeah, and the, the Rumpkey number, we talked about the bridge hopefully being lower, which
We'll, we'll know that.
The budget could be higher. So we, you know, we're, we, we don't know what we don't know. Uh, we, we've got a, we've got some.
Well, the, for the bridge, the only thing that's really in the budget is what, thirty five thousand dollars or something?
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
And, and that's a swag number because we don't have the book.
That, but that, that's, that's true. A hundred and eighty is not in the, in the budget.
I, I mean, the hundred and eighty is, is not in the budget. It's not in revenue. It, it, it's, and it's not in expenditures.
It's a loan, that's right. And it's repaid over five years.
Activate that loan, then it becomes revenue, doesn't it?
Well.
It, it, then it would be, then it would become.
So if you, if you look, if you, if you look at the revenue, if you look at revenue appropriations.
It's an asset.
We put the, we put the loan outside of revenues.
Right.
At the bottom.
Right.
Because it's a, it's a different animal. Yeah, so it's a, it's the, it's the point we've discussed. Uh, John, I think had some good discussion with our accounts about how to approach it. And this is, this was the way we put it in. Anyway, this is all very helpful to me.
You may want to ask our.
Oh, Mr. Greater.
Mr. Greater, what his thoughts are.
Well, I will say this, one, one, I don't think we can have our pencils sharpened up until we know these numbers on the, on the, on the bridge cost and, and all that. So I'll, yeah. You need the facts before you can make a knowledgeable decision. When, as we, as we said, we don't have them yet. Because they could, they could wind up being higher than we think as well as less. But I, I'm very sensitive to, it would be very reluctant to uh, either increase taxes of any sort or hit, hit our reserves if there are ways we could avoid doing it. So I'm, I guess I'm a budget hawk. That, that's what, that's what I ran on. So, but, but I'll, I, I I don't, I don't know how I'd come down on anything yet till I see those numbers.
Yeah. I, I think we're all in the same boat on that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the budget ordinance is, the draft budget ordinance is also in the materials. And it follows the form that we filed in the, uh, in January. Um, we've broken out a few more categories, as John had suggested, and I think, I think this slices it out pretty well. So that's, that's where we are at this point. Any other?
Well, I like, I like your format.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much. I appreciate your, and I want to say, Don Gibson and John Evans gave great support in this process. This is the first budget I've worked on and it's I, I recognized last year going through the budget process, listening to the two of them talk about the line items. And they just knew so much more than I did. And I thought if I, if I did get elected, I would want them in the process and they've been very, very helpful. As have all of you. Appreciate all the comments today.
Mayor, I think you should be commended on having, for your first budget, it's a very clean, understandable budget. I think it's a real good first product.
Thanks.
Agreed. Agreed. Yeah, I think this is, this is one of the easiest that it's been brought this way and I think it's the right way.
I think that was, that was something I learned from last year that we, the more information we get out, the earlier we get it out, the, the better for all of us. More transparency. And it's, and as I said, this discussion's been very helpful for me. So I appreciate everybody's comments. If there's no further business, and there can be no further business, since we've gone through the agenda, it's a special meeting. I'm sorry.
I know, they're in long time.
On the tax rate, I think we.
Beat it to death.
Okay, I think we ran over that, both several times. So, uh, if there's a motion for adjournment. I'll move in that. Second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Just in time for the parks meeting. Very good.
Okay, uh, just saying, uh, early before the meeting.